Attorney regarding some legal matters. And now off to municipal officers, business and our public hearings.
Judge.
Ms. Chairman, members of the board, we're here on the first issue tonight to talk about the COVID-19 update. Update on Governor Mills's orders. The orders that came down today were that she has extended for one month her emergency proclamation, civil emergency proclamation. With nothing else extended as of yet. Last week, as of Friday, she was issued a executive order to extend the general election or the primary election, I should say, from June 9th to July 14th. We are waiting for further guidance from her. The town clerks association wrote to her today. And I think I copied you folks on that letter. That letter indicates that the 400 towns that that clerk association represents would not want to hold the elections as a normal election where people come into the polling booth. They would rather see a secret ballot absentee type election. And so I think the governor needs to clarify a number of things with that election coming up on July 14th. For ourselves, the charter calls for our town meeting to be held the second Tuesday of June. I'm working with the town attorney for our next meeting to bring forth a order by the Board of Selectmen to move that to the July 14th date. So those are the orders of Governor Mills. We have also worked with the town of Kennybunkport and other members of the Kennybunk, Kennybunkport Wells and Agunkwood Water District to send a letter to Governor Mills to look at not implementing seasonal water turn-ons for the area towns. The city of Portland and the Portland Water District have also signed on to that. My guess is the governor took it under advisement and probably, probably will not implement that as time is running out with that situation. Wells' extension of the temporary lodging ban. We have extended, you folks have extended the lodging ban for the three categories that are in that order until May 15th. Needless to say, we are getting many calls. Many folks are asking why they can't get into their units. We are answering those and sometimes firmly, sometimes the people understand. But even today, our maintenance person at the rec department checking on playgrounds and making sure the signs are up, came across two couples with young families that were moving into their Airbnb for a couple of weeks. And he didn't, he didn't do anything about it, but he didn't confront them, but is still happening in Wells that we have issues trying to enforce this sort of issue of people going ahead and utilizing temporary housing against the governor's ban and your ban. The, on a better, more positive note, the update on the town impact fund that we've been working on at your direction for donations to be made. Last week, the board authorized taking $24,000 from the energy, alternative energy account. And having that stay in the energy account, but be used for COVID-19 issues. The donation account would be that. And we have worked with Brittany and Jody Sanborn, our finance director, who have worked through the social media app that we have subscribed to, to set up a program where it will appear on our social media accounts and website where people can very easily make a donation to that account. Now, the funds that will be used will come out of that and pay for vouchers for Hannaford, vouchers for IGA, vouchers for any store that we do now. It will also help us do energy purchases for them and other things that our GA administrator and the York County Community Action Program who are teamed up to help. St. Mary's Food Pantry will also be used and we're reaching, will be reaching out to them to help with their operations. Brittany, maybe you could talk about how the program will work and some of the names that we have come up with for the board to toss around and maybe select tonight for the campaign?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've been working the last few days on building out the donation microsite. So it'll exist in a few different forms. The first will be a microsite that'll have a separate URL that anybody can access. It'll show a little bit more information about the campaign and there'll be many access points to donate and you can donate via credit card or via PayPal. We'll also have a button on Facebook that any of our followers can hit to donate and then we can also embed it into our website. So we've been tossing around some names for the campaign and there were two that seemed to be sticking out the most. And I can, I can let you know what those are and I'd love, love some feedback on both of them. So the first is the We Are Wells campaign. And again, this is just a name for their campaign to show that we are working together as a town to support the community. So the first is We Are Wells and the second is the Wells Neighbor to Neighbor campaign. So those were the two that we have landed on and you know, we wanted to discuss tonight.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I like the We Are Wells. I like, I like We Are Wells. I like,
I like the neighbor to neighbor one.
I like the third option.
I think they're both good.
Can't go wrong with either one of them.
Okay, great.
Maybe we can get some people on Facebook to weigh in and at the end of the meeting decision.
Yeah, if you guys have thoughts, those who are watching, feel free to write in the comments on Facebook or here on Zoom and I'll keep track of who's put their vote in.
Can we do a Facebook poll?
Yeah, sure.
Might be good, some good interactions on that.
Yeah, yeah, I can get that up.
Do we need to repeat those names or?
I'll repeat it one more time. So the first is We Are Wells. And the second is the Wells Neighbor to Neighbor campaign.
I'm sorry, we'll do the Facebook and at the end of the meeting, we'll keep tabs as to which one comes out ahead. How's that sound?
That sounds good. So I'll keep track of the comments and I'll also put up a Facebook poll right now.
So one of the big things we've been working on as my, my staff, we had a very long department head meeting today. We each were tasked with talking about how we would open up our departments, what was needed to phase in the opening of not only town hall, but all the different facilities and infrastructure that we have here in town. This is obviously going to be talked about a lot more, but we wanted to, I sent out a background paper to, to the board. We're very interested in hearing your ideas. As I sent out a request to all employees of the town of Wells to give me feedback, which several did, very pleased with that. And so we are looking at what it would take to open up facilities such as town hall. How can we service the population? And the seasonal population that will come in? And we welcome them, but in this environment, we're going to have to have restrictions like you see in, in the grocery stores. We can't let that number of, a number of people in at a time. We're looking at some apps to help with the distribution sale of the beach stickers. And hopefully I can report next week whether or not we, we've come to any conclusion on that. We've talked to the town clerk's office about going online. There is a program right at the state level to register dogs. I know we haven't been wanting to do that because we wanted to have a more personal touch on it, but it's just like registering your car, re-registering your car online with Rapid Renewal. It's that type of program that you can license, relicence your dogs on it. We're looking at all sorts of things regarding tax payments. We're looking at putting a window or a similar to what you have as at the library, a book drop in the sidewall as you come in the back door of town hall. That would go into a closet in our storage area that people could securely drop off their absentee ballots or, their tax payments and so forth. So we are looking at different things like that. We're looking at the type of things we'll need to do to protect our staff here at town hall. We're getting prices on plastic sheathing like you see at the grocery stores in between the payment center and where you check out. Those things are actively being engineered as we speak. And so it's, it's a work in progress and we welcome any comments that the board has or maybe the public. But we, life is going to change until we can get this under control. And we don't want to stop people from using town hall, but we may have to go to something like the state has done with the workers unemployment where Monday, A through H, people with their last names, A through H. Tuesday, Wednesday, and then open it up Thursday and Friday for those people who have missed their names. These are just ideas that we are tossing around to present to the board. And so a lot more will have to be done. What we heard this week, this past week is unfortunately, there will not be any trolley service in the town of Wells or throughout the seacoast. That has been stopped. The festivals that we know of, like the Brew Fest has been canceled. We need some guidance from the board on the Memorial Day Parade, which my guess is we should cancel also. We've looked at the harbor services down there. We, we started a unique program down at the harbor where we provided each child that went crabbing or fishing off the pier, a, a life preserver that was borrowed and replaced. Well, in these times, you got to clean each, each of these life preservers every time somebody uses them. And we don't have the staff to do that, quite honestly. So there are things we have to think through and you know, liabilities that we, we have put the safeguards in place that we can't do very much about at this point. We're looking with the rec department at her summer camp and whether or not that can continue, can it be designed so that there is smaller groups? That's, that's being discussed actively. We're looking at use, more use of credit cards. We want to talk to the board about different things, possible delay of a month for the second half of the FY 20 taxes. There do may 26 to, and do we think through this a little bit and move it a month? To perhaps help people? So there's a lot of different things being, being reviewed at this time and I probably would, should stop right now and get some feedback.
One quick question that caught me, the, the Airbnb people, someone did go down there and ask them to leave, correct?
Well, I didn't, we didn't find out about this until many hours after it occurred. But the heat, the people left the playground, yes.
Well, not as far as the playground, not as far as the Airbnb because it just seems like if we're gonna.
Our, our staff, unless they're law enforcement.
Right, no, I don't expect the carpenter to do it. No, no, no stretch of the means. I was just curious.
John, the postponing of the second taxes in lieu of setting off, I know Jody's concerned as with all of us in regards to cash flow purposes in lieu of pushing the payment off, but why don't we leave the payments in place for those that we could extend a interest-free period before we start charging interest as an alternative?
Yeah, it could be a month, right?
And do it month to month to see how things go and where her receivables are at?
Yeah, I think we need to just think through that a little bit. Your idea is good. The mortgage companies are going to pay on time. It's, it's a matter of working with those people who cannot make their payment.
Correct.
I like the idea of extending the interest grace period instead of just increasing the, you know, the terms of the payment itself. So, because I think, I think a lot of people do just have a mortgage if the escrow is going to pay it like myself, so.
Yeah, I think that's the better idea of, of, you know, doing it that than extending it, I agree.
Yeah, I like that idea as well.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with it. I like it.
So it still would be due, but if you, if you late, you don't get the, right? Okay.
Unfortunately, having been ultra conservative in our budgets for so many years and having cash flow between 60 and 75 days, I'm not sure where we stand with that right now, but we've been, we've been fortunate that we've had that. Any other thoughts at this point on the, some of those things that John had said?
Yeah, I had a quick question on the, on the trolley. You know, I, I do, as many know, I, I have some strong beliefs about this virus, but it seemed premature on the canceling of the trolley for July and August. And I thought that was a federally funded process too. I thought they were funded by like either state or federal or something that, aren't they helped, helped out by, like, it's not just a for-profit, it's not like the Agunkwood Trolley where it's a for-profit, right? Where it's just this.
No, it's, it's not for profit. It's the, the trolleys themselves are purchased by federal grants. Each town kicks in, we kick in like 15 grand each year and so do the other towns. And then they work off their fare box.
We get our 15 grand refund this year, right?
Well, we haven't paid it yet.
Oh, okay.
That I'm aware of. We'll, we'll check that out though.
We'll be withholding that payment.
Yeah, I was surprised that it was so.
Yeah.
Extended, you know, July and August, that didn't. Are they not capable of running just only a couple of months?
It's, they have to gear up with CDL drivers and the whole nine yards.
Yeah, that's true.
Just seemed like a big leap, even if that was the direction this was heading, it seems like a, so long, it's a very forward-looking decision. Very, very forward.
What's the board's feeling, which is disappointing at best to be talking about Memorial Day parade? Should we hold off and see what things are at week to week at this point?
Right, is there a huge, who was organizing that now, John?
Well, that's, that comes under our, our volunteer coordinator event person. Cindy has had a disappointing week. Her, her festivals that she's been working on have dropped out and she wanted me to, to approach the board tonight because it just doesn't happen overnight, you know? Can she get the bands? Are we going to be able to do our traditional ceremony? Or is there, you know, may, maybe Selectmen Roach would know if we could get the bands, the, are the kids?
I doubt, I doubt the bands would be.
The bands, they can't get together.
But I would make the suggestion that, well, I don't want to make that suggestion yet because I'd be volunteering people to do stuff without actually talking to people, but I, I think we can have an alternative to that maybe in the fall. That might, that would be my hint that we could find a way to honor Memorial Day.
Yeah, Veterans Day.
Yeah. I think there's a way we could tie it in with some of the things we do in football. I'm just trying to throw some hints, but that we can maybe tie something in to help them out if we, if we have to cancel that parade. We don't want them, I don't want to do that, but I'm, I'm saying is if we, we, we will find a way to make sure we honor that Memorial Day in some way at some point, I think.
So John, is Cindy saying that tonight's the night that she'd need a decision to not put a burden on her or, because that's the last thing I want to burden her if we push off a decision.
No, it's just that I don't think a traditional parade is going to work this year. She would have to go back to the drawing boards with, you know, some, some mechanism here. I like the Veterans Day idea. Unless, unless you think we can do something for Memorial Day.
The problem is every time you go to Memorial Day, and it's an unfortunate thing, it's mostly the older, older guys that are coming, you know, to be, to be a part of it, the, the, the actual people, participants, I, I wouldn't want to put that into their, you know, you're, you're putting them out into a, you're putting them into a trolley, you're putting them into, you know, I mean, I, I just, personally, I think I'd just wait till Veterans Day and do a bigger thing on Veterans Day or, or somewhere around Veterans Day. It's two different things, I get it. We're supposed to memorialize the dead and Veterans Day is supposed to celebrate veterans. I get that's two different things, but at the same time, I think we can tie it in somehow and make it right.
At a minimum, maybe if it's just when the board and something, something I think should be done on Memorial Day because of the sacrifices that have been made, as small as it might be, and it might be just symbolic, I think that it still should, something should happen, even if we keep it to 10 people or less or something of the sort.
You could certainly, you could certainly easily, what they've done, I mean, I don't know if you guys, you guys probably aren't fans, but I watch this, I believe it or not, I watch opera on Sunday, but Andre Bucelli from Italy did a thing on Easter Sunday that was beautiful and they, they zoomed it or livestreamed it. We could livestream a ceremony that, that is out there and, and it would be four or five people doing the actual ceremony and that would give them at least something. We were done something and then give them that parade later on. You know what I mean? Or give them.
Well, let's leave it open for discussion, but I think we, we need to do something on that.
It could be a ceremony that we hold there and do the normal things that we do with the, maybe we can still do the guns, that type of thing, but no parade.
Okay. Other thoughts or comments?
So I don't know when the, I'm trying to look at the agenda and make, but one of the things I was thinking is, I don't know when we're going to open and I, I would never want to put a date on it personally. I'm not, I'm not, I think that's a mistake to put dates on anything right now of opening. The, one of the things I would like to throw out there to the board is, is I get that the, the seasonal cottages and stuff, that's been our, our biggest like heartache and I, and I completely understand in these decisions. Also closing restaurants and hotels also isn't easy, but I'm, I'm saying that's a big heartache or a big, I would like to see us, even if it was just two weeks on the other end, and then allow them to open two weeks early next year. So in other words, two weeks later this year in November, whatever the date is, I, I don't have the date for me, I thought it was November 1st, but, so we go to November 14, like we go basically just to around Veterans Day and then let them reopen for, like our April break, that area for two weeks before, give them, it owes them a little something, we've taken something away, but we're also now trying to give you, as long as everything's clear and we're, we're able to do this. Give them something on both ends, like that April would be great to give them a couple of weeks in April that, it's not going to kill us, you know, I mean, in any way. I, I get there might be an ordinance that says that it does, but we must be able to find a way to waive that two weeks on either side. I thought about going longer in one season, but it was brought to my attention, a lot of those water has to be shut off and then out winterized, so if you go too long, you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, cause people's pipes to freeze and stuff and then we'll be getting sued because I made that decision. So I'd rather see it two weeks on each side if we could. It's just an idea, I, I thought it to help out those, those owners of those units.
John, I like that idea.
I, I heard that this might come up by Selectmen Roach, so I've asked Leah to kind of look into it.
I can, I can give you a nutshell. So as you know, under the charter, any or almost all changes to the land use ordinance and that, Selectmen Roach, that's where all those dates are in the land use ordinance. Under most circumstances requires a town meeting vote. However, there is a really unique provision in the charter that allows there to be amendments to the land use ordinance when guidance or clarification is required and a majority of the selectmen, the planning board and the ZBA believe that that's required. So I think that it's, you know, we could get both of those boards to weigh in, say that that's required, it's necessary in the circumstances, and I think that that would empower, you know, that's, we can get it done without a town meeting. So it can be done. It might be a little, you know, require a bit of choreography, but we can, we can make that happen, I think.
I just think it's a good gesture on our part to say, hey, we get it, we understand. None of us want to do this, there's, I, I promise you, it's not in our thing that this is something we want to do. It's, it's, I, I believe it's important, but I'm willing to throw you something.
I, I love the idea of it, just, you know, like you said, as a show of good faith, it's not our fault anymore than it's their fault. And if we could do something to try to, you know, give back a little bit, just to help out, I think it'd be good.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, right?
Right now, there's too much us versus them idea behind, you know, and it really isn't us versus them, it's all just trying to unify here together to fight this terrible, whatever's going on. And I really don't think it's an us versus them, I, I think it's just a town trying to figure out how to, how to combat a virus. And it, I really don't think it's an us versus them, I, I think it's just a town trying to figure out how to, how to combat a virus and not let it spread to our people, and. This might be a great way to say, hey, we're not, we're not us versus them, we're, we're giving you something now in, in, in what we, and thank you for helping us not to spread this disease.
Um, okay, can I bring up something?
Sure.
Okay, um, and I did ask um, John to put the, start talking about what's gonna happen when we start opening up, because I. I really think it's important that people may not be able to see the light at the end of the tunnel specifically on a date, but at least to know that we're working towards that, or we, we're. Cause I think it's gonna take a lot longer to open up than it did to shut down. And uh, cause we can't all of a sudden have an influx of a whole bunch of people overnight, you know, we wouldn't be able to handle it, and then, you know, and um, we want to be cautious as we go, but I think it's. At least time for us to discuss what it's going to kind of look like, what we're, maybe toss some ideas around on, on how we're going to, you know. Um, open up the restaurants, and how are we gonna open up the, the lodging facilities, and I like the idea of allowing the seasonal places to weeks on either end. For the time that they've lost. So um, so I, I did ask him to put that on there so that people can hear us start talking about. Uh, what's gonna happen on the other end, and not just always about what we're gonna shut down, but maybe when this comes to um, the conclusion. That we can start opening up and letting people go back to work. And so um, some of the ideas that I, I thought would be good, you know, if we. Even if we looked at the restaurants when we started opening it up, maybe they can work for a week or so at twenty-five percent capacity. So that they can spread the people around, and um, and maybe the lodging can work at twenty-five percent capacity, slowly start and opening up the, to allow people in. That if people did come into the town hall, well, you know, use the masks, the, the gloves don't really help, but the, certainly it does washing your hands all the time and. And that, but um, so that when you start opening up, just like when you go into the grocery store, why can't we go in some other retail places the same way? You know, um, why would you not stay out? Right now, we can't go because it's not on the list of um, what you can do that's essential, but when we. When you don't have to stay at home, when you start moving back out, maybe everybody just wants to open the doors and that's it. But I'm just thinking that um, we might want to be looking at ways of slowly opening up.
Do that end, Kathy. Um. I spent some time over the last week since our last meeting, uh, looking at a few different things. The SBA loans for businesses, which. One loan officer who says normally they do process thirty loans in a month. Three hundred and three days.
Yeah.
The, you know, there's a lot of people taking advantage of that. The comments I received from business owners that I spoke to in town, um, they said, when, when we open, we hope it's gonna be a good opening. But the twenty-five percent, which I would have supported, some of the feedback, that was, if we're gonna be open, then we need to be open. Because they use social distance, walking past tables and going in and out of businesses. So the doubt that there was, when they opened, they opened, and. Everybody was pretty concurrent with uh. Rather have us err on the side of caution. And when that date is, we don't know, looking, we can all look at our crystal ball, but. Open a little bit later than to have us open, and then have a spike in, in the amount of virus conditions that we have. Shut down and then try to reopen again, so.
Yeah, that's good.
You've got some good feedback, uh, and you know, we want to, we want everybody to understand. That we want to open as soon as we possibly can, but that's, whether it's the president making the decision or us as a board. To encounter all the factors, so we're looking for more feedback from all the business owners. When they have the opportunity to speak to us so that we can collectively make a good decision.
Right, and I think we need to start saying it so that people can start telling us what, how they would like to see it, just like what you're saying, Carl. We need to have these discussions now.
Yeah.
And I know, speaking with Jonathan, as I do quite frequently on a daily basis, uh, multiple times. I know that he's in contact with surrounding communities, but uh, as we see states are starting to. Together to uh, figure out how they're gonna open. At smaller scale, we should be talking, say, from York to Kenny Bunkport. We collectively have this kind of the same uh, and patterns. Collectively, we, we may be able to come together on when we're gonna open and how we're gonna open.
Yep, and I think, you know, I, I too talked to some, I got Kathy, when I, when I saw your proposal, I, I went to some of the. Couple of friends of mine and just said, how, how does this work? You know, does this? Not because I was trying to prove you wrong, but because I wanted to figure out.
No, I, 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 I just put that out there. I don't have any.
Yeah. His only, his, there, a lot of their worries right now, um, with restaurants, I didn't talk to, I, I'll tell you about the hotel owners I talked about, but the restaurant owners. A lot of their worries right now are. How they're going to open, how, how they're gonna respond to the ideas of how. Cause things are gonna come out in their belief with that, how to clean things, how to do things, like to make sure this virus isn't spreading anymore. And like, so bath, like, right now, nowhere are public bathrooms open, you know what I mean? They, so that, you know. You have to have bathrooms if you're open a restaurant, so like, how, how do you clean that every time? You know, uh. Walking up and touching a railing, you can't clean the railing every two, you know, they, they, they have these worries. It's not. My worry, it's, it's their worry, because they don't want to be blamed for spreading a virus that, you know, ends up so. They're having these conversations amongst themselves, how that's gonna happen. Um, I will say in the two hotels, two. Two good stories I got this week was um. Both probably would re, want to remain uh. Not, not known, uh, anonymous, is that um. A guy from one of these three season village wanted me to make sure I expressed to the board his appreciation for us closing. He uh, he said he knows he's in the minority and those, those homeowners in those places, and he understands that. And that's why he doesn't want to be known who he is and where he is, because he said he'd be found out, but he thinks it's um. It's the right move, and um, he just wanted me to express that to you guys. Um, and then another story I got from a, a local hotel, when I was talking to them about. Reopening and how to, how to do this. He, he was thankful, he wasn't really. For or against uh, what we were doing, he was, he was up in the air. Um. But uh, last week, he, he, one of the guests he would have had. Came down with Corona, and he said to himself, my God, we would have spread this all over this place if we had opened, you know, they, they came down with it, called him, it's a relative too, which is sad, but. Hopefully she's feeling better. Um, but, you know, he, he said that, I'm just, I realized afterwards, jeez, thank God we did make that decision. So there is. You know, I, I think we hear the bad and the good. Um, I just wanted you to hear the good on it too. I mean, I've heard the bad too, I mean, believe me, I get the emails too, but.
So how do they feel? Did they say, um, uh, Tim, what did they give feedback, and do they want to just, oh, suddenly, like?
I, I don't want to say those two, because, because I didn't get into how they wanted to do it, uh, with those two, because that, that wouldn't be fair for me to say, but um. One owner felt they're worried about. How they're gonna train their chambermaids, they, I think a lot of the hotel owners understand already that they're not gonna have a great summer.
Right.
People are not gonna travel regardless of when the band is lifted. I mean, we've all talked, I'm sure you've talked about it with, amongst yourselves, like.
Yeah.
You know, my wife and I typically have gone away in the, in June somewhere. We're, we're not even thinking about it, because I don't, you know, we've gone to New York City for, and done things, we do, you know. I, I'm not sure I want to stay in a hotel room right now, right away, you know, so I get what their idea is, that they're worried about that, and they're wor, they're also worried how they. How they clean. These are those type of situations. Those are the hotels and restaurants. Now, the retail and stuff like that, that's a whole totally different business. And I think, you know, I think in one thing in my study this week, I've done a lot of studying on, on. Who we have coming in and who we have, what we have closed. One of the things Maine has actually done a decent job of is it's allowed, like. John McLeod, for instance, or, or um, the builders to stay building, the excavators stay excavating, the, the, the guys to stay doing this. Um, there's a lot of jobs that are happening. I see, I actually see help wanted up in our town still, you know, Hannaford's looking for help and people look for help. So some of our jobs are, are still going. We haven't, like Vermont, for instance, doesn't allow real estate, doesn't allow building, doesn't allow anything going on, so they're completely shut down. We've allowed some things to go on, so people are doing better here. There's still, I get it, there's still people out of work. I'm not, I'm not numb. But we've done a better job of, of not completely shutting down everything, so I think they. The, the idea behind is, I'm not sure how to reopen the restaurants and hotels. I, I, I think I gotta do more study. I'll be honest with you, with the three season cottages and the, and the condos, when I looked at, I asked this week for them to produce to me where they're coming from. And how many people are coming if we open on May fifteenth, and I was shocked. I, I was, I didn't realize how many people come, because if you take, I just took, I think it was only three. Units, John, or three properties.
Yeah.
And it was five thousand people from Massachusetts alone, but then you gotta times that by two point five. If, if, you know what I mean, in those three, and then New York was huge, and Florida was huge. Now Vermont and New Hampshire were big too, but they're having a lot of issues right now also, so. The numbers that would come here from the, the hot zones are tough to figure out how we're gonna do that. I, I'll be honest with you. It's a, it's an amazing number. I didn't realize, I guess I never realized, I knew how many units we had, but I didn't think about the numbers in, in there, and it. It was, on the, on the low side, on May fifteenth, if we open, it's twelve thousand five hundred. People come into this.
More than double than what we have now.
Right, and that's on the low side. That's if you just went with one person per unit, you know what I mean, and nobody's come with one person. And what I didn't, also didn't realize is, a lot of those units in those places, and are those people that, that are actually on the list. Are the people we send the property taxes to? A lot of those units, they never come here ever. They're renting those out through Airbnb or stuff, even one night, just one night. So now you've got people coming in for one night, who, you know, where are they coming from and all that stuff. So the idea behind that is, you know, I mean, you've got a constant turnover of different people coming into our town, using these three season cott, some, some are coming to be residents. I'm not saying it's everyone, but a lot of them. Are, are actual, you know, Airbnbs, they bought four or five of them in some of village, or four and five in this one, you know what I mean, and, and they're using it as a rental. And you're bringing in people from a lot of states.
Could we meet with, could we set up a, like a workshop with, you know, at some point, you know, that, I mean, if. So they could give us feedback of what their concerns were, or, you know, what we, I would, I would really like us to all be able to understand better what it is they want or don't want, you know?
Kathy, one of, one of the other things that is concerning is, of course, the foreign nationals that come to work. That, that doesn't open up, uh, that's a concern. The other concern is with the government allowing unemployment plus a six hundred dollar stipend going, that.
Right.
Why would I go back to work when I can sit home and make more money? You know, most importantly, besides that, it, people do have a concern for their staff and the staff's safety for whenever they open up, whatever business they're, they're talking about. They protect their staff from being exposed when you have that many people all coming back, pretty much. So those are some of the major concerns. I mean, I got a lot of good feedback of talking to the owners, and I appreciate. You know, to understand that uh, tough times, and like uh, Tim said. This isn't gonna be the greatest summer for any of the businesses in town, but uh, we're, we're so sympathetic and hopeful that. We lose the, some of the smaller businesses that are struggling right now, which we're, we're mindful of, so. We, we understand the situation, and it's dire, and we're doing the best we can with the information we have, so. I, I think further discussion with business owners and all of us, we all know business people in town, we all, so when you have the opportunity to talk. Feedback and bring it back to the full board, because it's great information as to what they're sharing right now.
See, I think there's, there's other things like that you could talk about too, about open for business, so to speak, is where you. Like, I know we only have one golf course in town, but if it was members only, you know, I mean, could, could you allow, right now you can't because of the governor, it wasn't us that said no golf, it was the governor, so. Right now, we don't, we can't touch it, but can you say, like golf, and as we go along, could you later on, after this is set, could we. Open the beach for walking and stuff like this, you know what I mean? Slowly start to do things that allow us to, to be open, but not. You, I, I want to wait till the health guys start saying, this is what you want to do, because no health guy has said that. No, no health guys. I mean, Shaw, Fauci, Fauci said, we're not ready, you know, I mean, no, no way, so.
We're definitely, I, I, I think, you know, we've, we've done, we've progressed to the point where we, we're not ready, you're right. But it's gonna be, and that's why I wanted the discussion, is because it's going to be hard to, to, to open up. And no one's gonna be, want to be the one that the business opens up that has a problem or an issue or causes somebody to get sick. And so I think, you know, um, I think meeting with, I think you're exactly right, Carl, meeting with people, and Tim, you've already started doing it, so I think that's a great idea.
I think, you know, like one guy said to me today, a restaurant said. You know, he said, coach, give me July and August and September, just get, get me those, and I'll be, I'll, I'll make it in my life. Now, I'd like to see us, you know. I don't know, I, you know, I got scared today when I looked at a conservative uh. Newspaper, not newspaper, conservative report out of LA, uh, done by a conservative think tank group, that showed if LA opened. Uh, in, in June or July, I can't remember, June or July, by August first, ninety-four percent of the LA would have the virus. And they'd have a death rate of, of a lot, you know, this, this was a conservative, this was a Republican group that put it together, because they were, they were nervous. And, and it was ninety-four percent of the people in, in LA would have the virus. That, that, those things, those numbers are scary. I, I believe in listening to doctors and scientists, not politicians on this, right? Because politicians have no clue right now.
And a lot of this right now at this juncture is out of our wheelhouse anyway, so I.
Yeah.
Think that, I mean, hopefully the powers that be are doing something and looking into this. I personally don't believe it's a long-term sustainable model. That being said, I'm also not advocating for throwing the doors open. We don't have enough info, we can't put a concrete timeline on it. There are certain things that we need to hit, but to say, oh, we're gonna eradicate this virus, that's a pipe dream. It's not going away, so hopefully our elected officials are doing something. That, to help mitigate it and looking into long-term plans. In terms of the town of Wells, I think we just need to keep watching and. You know, just keep the numbers, and I think it's a really cool way to tell at this point.
Right.
The other thing I wanted to say, because I, I received quite a few comments uh, over the last week. Just for the record, I don't do Facebook, I don't read Facebook, I'm not on Facebook. And this board does not make decisions based upon maybe a hundred or two hundred comments on Facebook. It's a great venue for information. I had people saying, well, it appears you're doing everything that, you know, two hundred people are telling you what to do, and that simply is not the case.
No, that is not the case.
We're gonna listen to the doctors and the scientists before we do anything, and it's great for public comment to come into us and the questions that we have, so that we have a free flow of information. But we do not run this town based upon Facebook.
I, I would say this, I have spent more time studying this thing than anybody I've ever studied in my life. Believe me, I never, my whole four years of college, I didn't study at all. Uh, so, I mean, it, it shows, but I have studied this thing through the roof, uh, you know what I mean, and I'm trying to get both sides of this to figure out how this is going. And uh, my decision is not made up, but what somebody says on Facebook, it's, I'm, I'm trying to go with what they're saying, and that, that's where I'm getting my info.
And that's why it's important to get the feedback from the businesses who know their own business better than we do.
So we're a month out from our open date, is it, are we in thoughts of extending that any further at this point, now that you're thirty days out?
I'm, I'm. I think, I, I think at this point, we need to listen to the scientists and the doctors, and we go week to week. And make determinations based upon that kind of information. I know we'd like to keep the businesses informed as to what's going on. Uh, and I'd love to be able to give any kind of a timeline, but I don't, we're ready at this point. Talking about what we need to do when we open. Is critical. I agree with Kathy, uh, to give that glimmer of hope that we are talking about opening at some point. But extending or doing, I think we need to wait for what the governor's gonna do by the end of the month first, and.
She just extended to May fifteenth, right? That was.
No, no, she only extended the emergency order, not the lodging and all that stuff, so that doesn't include.
Okay, good, all right.
She's gonna have to do that. I mean, she's not gonna have to do it or do it very soon. I mean, it's.
Right, you know, I, I think, I'm, you know, right now, I'll set with May fifteenth until, you know, until, like Carl said, listen to the. Listen to the people and the scientists and the doctors.
When's our date that we would then make a decision? Because I think people do have to know. What we're looking at timeline wise. I know we're going week to week, but there needs to be, you know, some, like. We need to make decisions X amount of days out from whatever our end date is, that way people have planning and.
I would, I would suggest two weeks, I, I mean.
Right, two weeks.
A two-week window is all we can do right now. Every two weeks, we gotta.
Yeah, Sean, I, I asked that question of the business owners that I, that I've spoken to, as to how much, what kind of lead time for staffing, for ordering goods. And it's anywhere from a week to two weeks is, is pretty much all they need. I spoke to.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments at this point in time?
Thank you, everybody, for discussing this.
Yeah, we'll move on to good news, John.
Good news, we've had, during this time, we've had a lot of people help each other out. We've been working consistently with one or two people in town that have not gotten their mail from the post office. And it's for a number of different reasons. One, their mailbox is not in the right location or elevated properly for the rural delivery person. So I just want to reach out and thank everybody that has touched the one or two people. You know, I've, I've, I've helped where I could, but there's a network in town that's helping work with them to try to get this rectified, as well as so many other things are happening to help the elderly in town with their meals, with their groceries, with their dry goods and so forth. And light, light maintenance likewise. So that's it here. Also, a big shout out to all, all the public safety folks, whims, fire, police, and what they do. I know that there are a lot of calls each day. They're not all serious, but still they're out there doing their thing.
I, I, for, for some good news, I think everyone, does anybody know if anybody's received a check from the government yet?
I know people that have. I don't, I have not. I don't, I know people that have, but.
Well, there was somebody, I think in Indiana, I saw something on the news that they, they went to check and they, they had a deposit from the federal government of 8.2 million, so. Keep an eye on that.
Shoot, I'm going to go check.
It didn't, it didn't last. They found their mistake and withdrew the money quickly, but, you know, check your, check your bank balances because you never know.
They're not going to get charged taxes on that, are they? Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Sorry, no, I, I had a question on, on, because I think we talked about this. The question, I think I talked to John this morning that he was going to be in a, a webinar or something tomorrow about Airbnbs, but that's a great question. I mean, as much as like our, our local hotels and lodging are losing money, uh, right now, I, I shouldn't be hearing about Airbnbs being rented in Wells then. That, that's certainly not fair in any way. And that should have been stopped. I thought, I thought I read somewhere where Airbnb was like putting a stop when those things were in effect. Obviously, they didn't. That was just a.
Well, and didn't we just have a conversation where we had talked about regulating these things? And we said, ah, we don't see a need at this juncture. Maybe we need to revisit that and have some sort of regulations in place for them specifically because of this now. I mean, this is just.
I would have hoped they would have been honest and not done it. And now you might need regulation because obviously it's not being honest. You know, I, I know it might be only a couple and you're penalizing everyone, but Wells Beach has become an Airbnb. You know, I mean, the most, most houses on Wells Beach are Airbnb, so.
Quick question too. Did, did we set up, uh, any sort of, is this still good news? We can talk about this later, because that's.
This is still good news.
I didn't know we were still, I didn't know we went to good news. I missed that.
Not trying to derail the conversation, you know? No, I just had a question if we'd ever actually established like a, a fine structure for violations on that. It, it's speaking to that with the Airbnbs.
If you're talking about the executive order that the selectmen passed, there is a fine that goes from $100 to $1,000.
Okay, just curious. Thank you, John.
I mean, it's, it's certainly unfair to people that, you know, our, our, our businesses, that, that people are still doing this. If, if this is going on, you know, I mean, if, if, if you're still renting out for a week, you're violating a rule and that's not fair to, to a Village by the Sea or, or, um, the Lafayette or anyone. That's not fair.
And just to add to Selectman McLeod's question, it absolutely is 100 to 1,000 per violation, but it's also very specific in the order that each day there is a violation. It's a separate and distinct violation. So those penalties are daily.
Yeah, I think, just to sum it up, I think when the pandemic is over and we have some time to revisit thing, I think looking at the Airbnbs and other issues for, whether it's licensing or whatnot, we should be taking up at a later date.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, um, I have some good news. Can I give some?
Sure.
Okay, I have a shout out, um, and as you know, um, from the Wells, the Gunquay Senior Center down at 300 Post Road Wells. There have been meals provided for the seniors. We have over 400 members of that organization. So this week Stonewall Kitchen on Monday gave meals, and these meals are anywhere from 50 to 80. That, that they're, they're provided to the seniors that, and if they can't come pick them up at Curbside, then it gets delivered to them by a group of, there's a group of teams that deliver them. Tuesday was Billy's Chowder House. Wednesday is a new one that's being added. The Front Porch in Agonquay is making meals for the seniors and they'll be delivered between 12 and 1:30. Thursday is Stonewall Kitchen, and it's the cooking school there that's making the meals. Friday is Verano's. So we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Fridays now, all covered. And the seniors are really appreciating them. And I do want to add that the ones that are actually taking advantage of this, not advantage, but taking, but getting this and, and liking it are the ones that really should be getting the meals. So it's been a very success. And I thank all the restaurants for doing this.
I have a couple of good news, but my first, how old is a senior citizen now? Is it 55? I just, I think I just turned 55. Can I?
You, you made it.
I haven't, I just, I've already sent an application to you, Tim.
Sean would agree. He, he knows I need that. My good news is a couple of things, and I'll, I'll go on to the school stuff too, but the, the good news I had was driving around Wells on Easter. I don't know if anybody saw this on Easter Sunday, but it was someone, and I have no idea who, went all around town to different intersections and, and different places and put tulips out.
Yes, they did.
Wells. I think they put it at the fire department. They put it at the.
Center, they put it at the senior center.
On the corner of 9B. What, what a cool, I mean, it, it brightened my day just driving around on Easter Sunday. I was driving somewhere, essential. But, and when I was, I saw it, I was like, how cool is that? What a nice gesture on someone's part, you know, to buy all those tulips and nice, I don't know if anybody knows who they are, but they don't want to be known, thank you. It made my day and I think it made a lot of other people's day too. So, John, did you have info on that or you just?
No, I have no idea.
All right. Um, I'll go over the school stuff. Things are still going well. We're going into the, the week here and then we got a, a week, you know, we're, we're taking April break to try to regroup with kids and, and teachers. And then, you know, like, we know we're, unfortunately for everyone, spring sports is out and, and the school will be done. Soon, you know, in about a month and a half, but I, I think the teachers have done, teachers and administration, not me so much, but everybody else has done an outstanding job. It's been unbelievable to watch things go on and how, how this is being delivered. Uh, I'm, I'm thankful we were prepped. I think there's a lot of schools that were not prepared for this and had no idea what to do. We had prepped for it, um, and, you know, and got ready. And I think the kids are getting delivered a really good education. It's not easy for them. It's not easy for the parents and it's not easy for the teachers, but it is something that, it's a legit learning. What I'm listening to every day is legit learning and legit education. So, um, you know, I, I praise the entire student body, which we have great kids, which we say all the time, teachers and, and administration, because what's going on there is, it shouldn't happen and we wish it wouldn't, but it is. And, um, and the way they adapted was outstanding. So that's my other good news.
And just to piggyback on, on some of that, I know it's come up a few times from the school side of things. There are lunches that are made and just a shout out to you, Coach, or how that you do, because I know every day you're delivering those meals to those that need it and dropping off the rest at the police station. You get a kudos for good news for doing that. It's greatly appreciated.
Thanks. It's my essential travel. It's my one time to essentially travel.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to current agenda items. We have no action on accounts payable and payroll warrants. But the next item is update discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases, and personnel. With the same discussion and action on the fire station bids that were received April 9th, 2020. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have our fire chief with us tonight. And Ron Lamar, our architect, who's overseeing the bidding and the project. This is the fire substation that was, monies were raised in the bond issue to pay for the substation. The bids, we received six bids. Bid tabs went out to the board. Hopefully you could read, read the fine print there. We had one bidder come within our budgetary area that was TPD Construction Company out of Sanford. And I'd like to turn it over to Ron, if Ron's still on.
I am, yeah, thank you. So as John said, we had several bidders and we checked out their references as they had picked up the drawings and we knew who was looking at the job. We were calling references. So as John pointed out, the proposal form from TPD, and they are in Sanford, and their proposal, which you may have in front of you, their base bid price was 1,260,000. They had some site alternates to add parking for 13,100. Some pads for future generators or cisterns for fire protection of 12,500. And then there was a deduct alternate to actually make the building smaller. If we decided to go in that route, the savings would be $120,000. So the good news, as John pointed out, is they came in right where we wanted them to come in. They also offered on their bid form, a couple of different options that the fire chief may be interested in to enhance the building, more insulation and a better sort of feel on the inside, because it is a pre-engineered building. And they're looking forward to starting with us and working with us. So that's the, you know, that's pretty much the gist of it. John, would you like me to go through everybody's amount that we've bid?
Only if the board wants you to.
Okay, just, I mean, very quickly, Benchmark, BPS, Jewett, Pine Brook, Structure Tone. Those were the bidders.
And it ranged from 1.8 million down to the TBD 1.26.
Yep.
Just a question, quick question, John?
Yes.
Uh, I know that's the budget. Have we finalized where we're standing with the public safety facility now? And what do we have for contingency with this next building? Too soon to ask that?
It is. We have one last project with the building outside of the landscaping. It's with some canopies to shed the water off some of the doors. We are waiting for Ron and the contractor to come back with some pricing on that. And so right after that, we should know. We are still waiting for our driveway permits on the land up on 109 that we would go out and rebid, or we, yeah, rebid that land for people to place bids in to sell it. Got the town meeting approval to do and for that money to go against the fire substation.
How long has this bid good for?
60 days.
Okay.
Um, I believe it's 60 days. I usually put that in the bid documents. I can check that out, but it's, let me see if they qualified in their bid, the time. But it's typically 60 days.
Questions from the board?
What, what we're looking for tonight is to give us guidance to start working with TPD and to bring, bring it back when we're ready for a workshop with the board. And this is a design build, so we want to meet with TPD and get their ideas of cost, further cost savings and bring all that back to, to the board.
We'll take a motion.
I move to authorize the bid proposal from TPD Construction to be further investigated and brought back as a workshop item for the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Our next item is discussion and action on accepting Du Bois and King Inc. Structural Engineer Consultant Proposal to first evaluate a replacement or functional design for the webhead seawall that was damaged in the March 2018 storm. And that is reimbursable by FEMA, which is about $12,000. And two structural engineer assessment and optional replacement and/or repair costs for the casino square seawall and the Drake's Island Wooden Bridge, which is estimated 8,000. John?
Well, that, that narrative kind of sums up why I would say, Carol Murray, our Public Works Director, has found a good structural engineer from Du Bois and King. And they are, they have done seawalls, they've done bridges. And I think it's a fair price for this analysis. And we would recommend both Carol and I, Carol thought she could get on the Zoom, but I've been texted that she, she can't for some reason get on. So I guess I would say to you that Du Bois and King is a very good company. We used to use them many decades ago. And I would recommend that we move forward in getting this analysis of these different capital projects. As we talked about, these may lead you into a, a bond issue in the fall. Uh, and so the sooner we have this sort of information and cost, the more time you have to think about what you want to do.
Questions from the board? Take a motion.
I move to proceed with the two structural engineering proposals from Du Bois and King Incorporated for a total cost of $20,000, that's $12,000 from the FEMA storm damage account of 0707 and 8,000 from the infrastructure fiscal year 20 appropriation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, who's second after, did you second that, Tim?
No, I will.
Oh, sorry.
That was me, sorry. All in favor now?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Our next item is discussion and action on moving forward with improvements to the handicap parking at the Drake's Island Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there is an illustration in your packet of, from our discussions of the Parking and Traffic Committee of how that is to be laid out. There is some preliminary work that really needs to be done down there in repaving that section and working on the ramps going on to the beach. What Carol Murray has done is to go out and get a quote from our paving contractor, current paving contractor, of approximately $7,500 to work on that, as well as the balance of about 2,500 to do cement work. And what we would propose, instead of striping it the way with paint and so forth, is to use some plastic lines and see if the handicap parking design will work for the summer. Make sure people are happy with it and get some positive or negative feedback.
Questions, your comments from the board?
Yeah, so what are we looking at for cost?
10,000.
Even, okay. From the end, is that going to come from the Beach Enterprise account?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah. All right. I move to proceed with the project and appropriate up to $10,000 from the Beach Enterprise account to undertake the project.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, again, thank you. Our next item is discussion and action on updates personnel committee assignments, issues. issues, resignations, nothing from the town manager or the selectmen tonight, so we'll move to discussion and action on accepting donations and bequests. The first being $1,050 in Hannah for gift card received from Greg Bastin under Rosa Camp Brown COVID-19 impact fund.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Next, discussion and action on approving the minutes of the April 7, 2020 Selectman's Meeting. Corrections needed to be made.
I move for approval of the April 7, 2020 Selectman's Meeting Minutes.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
17.
Four zero one, thank you. Next, business, we are open to the public for the second time, or for the first time, I guess, this evening. We have any comments or questions coming in?
Yes, so I have a large list here. It's about two pages of comments. So I'll read through them exactly how they're written and I'm sure we'll have some duplicates, but I'm just going to go down the list. So the first is, could we find businesses not abiding by the rules and still allowing rentals and people from out of states to stay with them? Would that make an impact?
I didn't hear some of that to answer that or?
I think we we tried to answer that, that if we catch up with people who have moved into Airbnbs after the order by the Board of Selectmen, which was April, March 30th. So anyone that moved in April 1st on, if we found that they didn't have extenuating circumstances under the order, we would be fining them.
Um, any information on the opening of campgrounds and seasonal openings? There was some confusion about the plan moving forward for when we're going to re.
The three categories of lodging, which the campgrounds fall into is May 15th. It's been, they cannot open until May 15th.
And what's the ETA for the beach reopening?
I think everything is, I'll jump in, John, everything is subject to change contingent upon what we hear from the scientists and the doctors. And you'll know, your guess is, I think, as good as ours in regards to when any of this is going to take place.
But it's, but right now it's March, May 15.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, there were a lot of questions about Airbnbs. How will Airbnb rentals be enforced? If we're unable to rent our cottages in the summer, something firm should be in place to be fair for everyone.
We we are looking into Airbnbs. We have a view of a program tomorrow that Portland and South Portland are using. I don't know much more than that, but our our team at Town Hall is going to sit through this webinar.
Um, how about an abatement for people that can't use their seasonal homes potentially for an extended time?
The law law really doesn't allow for abatements of that type. The assessment is made on the on the facility that's in place there, on the value of that facility. It does not contemplate the usage of that facility for taxes.
Um, why are seasonal cottages lumped in with rental units and hotels and not second homes?
The cottages that are on Route One, the three season cottages are lodging facilities. They get a lodging license by the Board of Selectmen. They were given that status because they fit into the density that they were given the permit for by the planning board and what they requested.
Um, there's reference here a few times to individuals who are found moving into Airbnbs today. Is there a penalty for those people?
Well, unfortunately, that was given as an example of violations. We don't know who these people are. And and again, that was cited as an example of what is happening in town.
Um, what about the owners of the campgrounds giving back a portion of the seasonal?
The campground participants or users of the campground would have to work that out with the owners.
All right, um. Why can't the six-month taxpaying residents come up for a few hours with masks and gloves on to be able to go into their units to make sure there's no damage from winter month, months, et cetera? It's very stressful not knowing the condition of their home.
Yeah, I I have gotten probably a dozen of those calls within the last week. One today, the gentleman drove up at five, five o'clock in the morning. He has a condo in one of the hotels. He wanted to do some painting and one of our police officers caught up with him. And he called me afterwards and said, I'm from Massachusetts. I wanted to come up and do maintenance work on my place. And I said, that is prohibited. You either need to be quarantined for 14 days or go back and be quarantined down down Massachusetts. It's not legal for you to travel up into our state, either by your laws or by the laws of the state of Maine under these emergency orders. And that's so hard to make these people understand. We get these calls all the time. Why can't I come up to check to make sure the plumber has turned on the water correctly? Why can't I come up just to see if the house is standing? Well, it's not us, it's the orders of the state. And you should check with the state that you're coming from to see if you can even drive up here. It's not an essential service. You need to stay home.
One moment, just taking a look. Uh, there was a question here, how will we be able to make those plans without any guidance yet from Maine CDC?
Um, you mean reopening the community or what what exactly are we?
I think the question is just around if we've been, and there were a couple other questions down in my list here, but who are we actually consulting with in terms of scientists and doctors? And are we taking recommendation from the Maine CDC?
We are definitely taking a lead on Dr. Shaw at the Maine CDC, Doc, the federal CDC, our political leaders, the governor, the senators, the president and exactly when we can move forward here. As you've seen in the news, there are clusters of states that are beginning to work together to think through how to do it. Getting some feedback here. There there are states that are working together to think through this. And like the chairman recommended, we will be working with our coastal communities to think through how this corridor can try to work together to open up and and create ways in which this can be smoothly done.
Great. How are we going to control weekend campers from other states and Canada?
Well, I think the Canadians are, from everything I've heard, are probably not going to come down as they have in the past. The weekend warriors that we've been talking about coming up to check on their houses and so forth, we're going to have to allow the police and other folks to kind of watchdog this, but it's it's very difficult, I got to tell you, in trying to to catch or prevent this from happening.
Um, I had a question, last week I paid my property tax to the town. It happened to Oda Cottage in a seasonal community. As a taxpaying resident, resident, can you please explain why I'm not allowed to occupy my cottage?
Well, I think what we've said all throughout this meeting is that there are governor orders as well as town orders that because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we are not allow allowing, nor is the state allowing lodging to be occupied. Seasonal houses are not allowed to be opened, or if the person does show up here, they will have to stay behind closed doors for 14 days. And they, we don't have food delivery here in Wells. There's no Uber delivery system. So you better be able to live off of what you left back in the fall.
Next question is, what about letting the 100% seasonal open earlier than hotels as we do not rent our units out?
Would you repeat that?
What about letting the 100% seasonal resorts open earlier than hotels as they don't rent out units?
Well, John, can I take this for a second? Because it seems like every question is the same. And I'll answer the way I've answered it the last two weeks. And I I've seen a couple of things flash by the screen here on on comments, but so the the whole reason behind this is, and people, somebody just said, are you, well, how are you shocked by how many people come to Wells? I'm not shocked by how many people come. What I said, when I said that, when I looked at the numbers, I was shocked at how many came from states that we have some serious issues in with health concerns. That's what I was shocked at. And I was shocked at the numbers that would be coming on May 1st, if we're open on May 1st or May 15th, on May 15th. I've said this from the start, whether you agree with it, whether we've overreacted to the virus or not overreacted to viruses, that's fine. However, we don't have the infrastructure to handle you right now. I I just can't explain to anyone, if you walked into our Hannaford, you would see there are days, there's no lettuce, there's day, there's no this, there's no that. And now you add 12,500 people. Our York Hospital, the one hospital we have around us, has six, what do they call it? Intensive care beds, six, you know? We just don't have it. We don't have the EMS. We don't have anything to read, to do those things that you want us to do. I I feel bad. I don't feel good about this. I say this every week. However, we don't have the infrastructure right now to handle that. Just yesterday, it was announced that our supply chain might get even worse because of what happened in North or South Dakota, I can't remember, a whole meat factory had to shut down. 5% of our our meat is not going to come, of our pork supply is not going to come anymore. The the supply chain is getting worse for a little while and we just can't handle you. I'm sorry about that. I I don't know know how else to explain it. That's what we we are doing. We are trying to protect the people that are here right now and protect you at the same time. We just can't let this disease spread in our town, just like you don't want it to spread in your town. I don't know how else to, if I'm wrong.
And the other thing is too, the 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 orders from the states are not suggestions. They are orders that can be lawfully enforced. So even outside of our ordinances, you can't travel. It's a math problem, like Tim said, you can't add, well, you shouldn't add one more person to the equation up here. You just can't do it. And if you make an exception for one, you have to make an exception for all. I've heard the words, you know, transient visitors. It's not about transient visitors. It's not about hotels. It's not about campgrounds. It's not only that, it's about, we can't handle any more people, period. Just it's not doable. So it, none of us feel good about it, but it's just a fact. It's a hard, a hard fact to, a hard fact to accept, but it's a fact.
Um, next question is, does the police department and the fire department in Wells have enough PPE as it stands now?
I would include WIMS in that and they're, the fire chief says they're managing. WIMS is nodding also, he's on my right, and the chief is unmuted. And she's saying yes.
We're holding our own. We have procured procured some stuff. The director of WAMS has been gracious and gotten us some things, which is, we're very thankful for. But yes, we're doing so far, so good. And but again, it's because we don't have the spike that New York has, Massachusetts has, where so far we've been very lucky and for the things that have been put in place to keep things low for us. One thing I did want to say, John, before I mute my mic again, if people are really that serious that they need their their property checked on, call us, we'll go check on it for you. If it means that much to you, we will go check on it for you. Not that that's what we want to be doing, we're not going to do them all day long. But if you really feel that it needs to be checked on because something may have happened, you call. And you can call and ask for me and I will speak to you and I'll determine whether it's really necessary. But I just wanted to put that out there and that we will do that for people.
Um, next question, how many cases has Wells had to date?
The CDC in Maine does not provide that sort of data to municipalities. It's on a county by county basis.
Next question.
We we know it's here, though. We know it's in every single community in York County, in Cumberland County, in all 16, well, not in one county, but in the other 15 counties, it's there.
Yeah, the Scotticano County has remained safe. It's the only one.
And then, and then today, Dr. Shaw talked about how York County and Cumberland County have that community spreading going on right now that he's worried about. Also, I I get why people want to come, but one of the places that, this kills me every time I read this, and it's happened in Massachusetts even worse than it's happening here. One of the places that's hard hit right now is our VA hospital. I can't think of, I don't want anybody to get this, but for God's sake, those are the guys I definitely don't want to get this. And and it's hit hard on that hospital, a lot of guys have it and and women. And and the last night, the only death in Maine was in was in York County, just, we don't know the towns, we don't know.
Uh, next question, is the board planning to meet with three season owners as suggested?
I don't think we we said we were going to meet with the three season owners. I think what we said was we are working towards through Selectman Roach, the possibility of extending their stay in the fall of 2020 and opening perhaps a little earlier in 21.
Um, there was a comment about how lots of medical folks come stay at Airbnbs when helping out other hospitals. And there was concern that if we shut down Airbnbs, these essential workers and medical personnel wouldn't have a place to stay. Is there any way that we are monitoring that or?
We are, and I haven't found one situation where it would rise to the the level of where they could stay there. And and what we've had is contract agents who claim they're working, for example, in the mid-coast hospital up in Brunswick. And, you know, that's a full hour away, hour and a half away, hour and 15 minutes away. And there, if they're working that far away, they should be staying closer up there.
Um, question here about whether or not Wells has a shelter in place?
We are, we we have a stay-at-home advisory out there. And the governor has an order to stay at home.
Next question is, so can we come to mow the lawn? Next question is, so can we come to mow the lawn?
No, you may not come up from Massachusetts to mow the lawn.
Or anywhere else.
Or anywhere else. The grass is not growing yet.
Next question, there's actually a few questions about the Airbnb. First question is, is there any way that you're going to actually check whether or not Airbnbs are renting? And then also, does this rule also apply to other rental services like HomeAway, VRBO? Or is it specific to Airbnb?
It's all of those three or whatever you were saying. All platforms that are renting are not supposed to be renting as of April 1 through this emergency. What we don't have, because we are such a transient community, what we don't have is a registration of these facilities. And that is something I think the selectmen may be open to following this emergency, as has happened in Portland and in South Portland.
Okay, next question, how is property value affected by COVID restrictions and thereby tax valuation?
It is not.
Next question, there was some confusion on when we are lifting these restrictions and how often we are reevaluating. This question here says, earlier the board said week to week. Now the board is saying May 15th.
The order in place is May 15th. The governor has extended her emergency, civil emergency order to the 15th of May. I am sure that as she and us go week by week, we will be evaluating where we are. The selectmen have selected every single Tuesday to meet. And we will be discussing this every single week as we go.
Next question was whether or not we can upgrade streaming infrastructure and quality. And this question came from the Town of Wells stream, which is just a video of the actual stream. So it's a reminder to join the direct Zoom or the stream on the PD page.
Yeah, we're trying to optimize everything we have, which is not a huge amount. We are at Town Hall using our cable station to broadcast on channel 1301 on Spectrum. We are streaming live that is recorded and can replay two or three times a day on 1301 on a subscription basis called Town Hall Streams. We have recently hired Town Hall Streams through their connection to play live on Facebook. And we are now doing Zoom. We have updated Zoom to prevent the Zoom bombing practices that some of the other communities are seeing as they go through what we are doing here.
Next question, why is the governor not helping York with more beds?
Well, I think it's not about beds. It's the ICU containment area within the hospital is just sized out for six beds.
Next question, do these directives apply to those who live inland in Maine or just the out-of-staters?
So if you own from Acton, if you own a condo down here in Wells, that's one thing. If you are from out of state and own something here and want to come up and do something, that is where the orders come into play. I would say in Maine, it is still not essential that you come from one town into another to do this checking of your properties.
Next question, are seasonal homes considered year-round homes that are occupied six months and the other six months left vacant?
Again, these are seasonal homes that you are, that people are not here. They're not registered voters here. They're not living here year-round. They are citizens of another community. They own this property that they come up to for the summer season. And we've had not hundreds of calls or emails, but huge numbers of emails. And I feel bad for these people, but they're traveling. They need to know when they can leave their Florida residence or wherever it is to come up here with their RV or in their cars. And I'm so sorry to say, we don't know when we can tell you that.
Next question, how much lead time will the board be able to give seasonal cottage owners as to the definitive date for openings? So those who have rental properties can manage reservations, etc.
Well, it goes to what I was just saying. You know, we feel for these people, but it has to be based on the science and on the safety of the area that the governor will lift her ban. And once that is lifted, the board of selectmen will have to review that and feel comfortable about what they want to do for their community.
Next question, who can be contacted at the town regarding observed Airbnb violations?
They can call the police business line at 646-9354. They can email myself at jcarter@wellstown.org. And they can do it that way. They can send mail to us, whatever they want to do.
Next question that just came in, it's a repeat, but I'm going to read it. As a seasonal owner from New York, am I not allowed to drop off items and check on my home?
Is that York, Maine?
No, New York.
New York. No, they're not. Stay home.
One thing, John, on the Airbnb's, don't wait to call us. Call us as soon as you notice it. Because it makes it a lot harder if they've been there for a week for us to do something. So they're more like a stand on if we know about it as soon as you notice people in.
All right, I'm looking through the lists just to make sure there's nothing I missed. If anyone else sees.
There was a question, did you see a question about Swamp John Road? Sorry, I'm going to bring it up.
Oh, no.
There was one on there.
I thought I saw it on Swamp John. I don't have it, but I.
Guys, I have it. It says, after having two good rainstorms, it's quite a mess again. Is there any way to get that graded again? And also a way to potentially limit or lower the speed limit and limit the traffic to local traffic only. People are driving fast.
You know, I drove it today, and 20 miles an hour is all you can do on that road. That and that is uncomfortable. So it is bumpy, you know? If people are speeding, I don't know how they're going to stay on the road, but.
On the grading, I think we'll definitely address that. On the speed, I think, chief, we still have to go through the DOT on that.
And that's. I had asked that question a couple of meetings ago, and that was the answer that we got is it's a state regulation. So it's not something we have any power over, unfortunately.
Just remember, on July 14th, we will have that on the ballot. And so vote, vote often and make sure it gets done.
Could we?
You'll have the Swamp John Road rebuilt on it, right?
Right.
Can, could we do that, though? The other part of the question was, I don't know, somebody else can, I'm not an expert on this stuff, so somebody else can. Couldn't we say, put up a sign there saying, local traffic only, like they do in some areas, like some, is that a bad thing?
No, it's not. It's not a bad thing. But if you want to prevent the truck traffic for construction purposes, you better make it official as a no truck allowed route or vehicles-only route.
Is that a bad, I'm asking for opinion. I don't know enough about it. So I'm going to let other people.
That has always been used as a vehicle, truck route through there.
Couple more questions came in, if we're good to move to this. What are we doing about those violating the order?
We have moved people along. Depending on what the violation is, the police have gone to check on condominiums and lodging facilities. Our code office has also assisted in these issues. But these are only a handful of instances that we've been called and actually checked things out. We've also found in a handful of places that when the police go, there are essential people who are living there. And it's verified that they can stay there under the order.
Another question here, can a Wells business go to a seasonal home and do outside work?
If there is a permit issued for the seasonal facility, if it's other than landscaping or something like that, if it's for painting or putting in new windows or something, the owner cannot be there. But the contractor, as long as he or she has picked up a permit, building permit, can do the work.
Okay, I'm just doing one final sweep, but that seems to be all the questions unless, again, anyone from the board has additional questions that I missed.
We got, Cindy has a question. Well, they're not going to hear you. You got to come over here.
Okay, six feet away from you. I have a question for Coach. So many summer activities are being canceled. Yarmouth clam festival and Seeds of Peace is not opening this year. Have they made a decision yet on the lobster bowl?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out what the lobster bowl was, and I realized what it is.
Do you have anybody playing this year?
We do. We have Matt Tufts playing in that game for us. And as of right now, it's still on. I know they're in the mode of, you know, I think they're worried about it. Obviously, the decision by the Shriners, and I think it'll be sooner than later, I would guess, because they have a lot of planning and a lot of things they have to do. But as of right now, as of today, it's still on.
Thanks. How are they going to tackle from six feet away?
Yes, that's going to be tough. I would agree.
Thanks, Coach.
And our Public Works Director just texted me, and the road will be graded.
Okay, good.
One other question just came in. There's a sign on both sides of the turnpike entrance that says something to the effect of, if you come in, you must quarantine for 14 days. Is that contrary to the Wells ordinance?
No. Except the state has the muscle to mandate it.
I think from the questions, what people need to understand in the predicament that we're in, all of the stay-at-home orders and whatnot, the reality of it is that between Wells and Algonquin, we have a population year-round of approximately 12,000 people. When we opened, if we opened up both towns, the population zoomed to somewhere between 45,000 and 50,000 people on a weekly basis. That kind of an influx, even if it's only 35,000, at least 20,000 people, even if we had groceries, even if we had ICU beds, if the infrastructure was in place, the bottom line is that we're going to see a spike in the virus. And what we're trying to do is to protect you people from coming, that you're not infected, and that the people that are here stay safe as well. Because we just had our third death, I believe, in the county that was announced. It's serious. I know people want to come up. I know, we all know the reasons why you want to be here. You're taxpayers, we get it. But this is about life and death and the decisions that we're making. Basically, for not just the Town of Wells people staying year-round, but for everyone who comes here and visits the town. It's everybody's safety, and that's the bottom line. And, you know, we're going to have people that are going to beat the system. The 5% factor that causes 95% of the heartache. If you're going to choose to do that, you're going to choose to do it. There's no rules or regs that are going to stop people from breaking the system. It happened. And the bottom line here is, if the police chief and the officers going into and checking on people and seeing about illegals that are renting, you know, that's a personal decision for people to have doing that, and shame on them. But this is about everybody's safety. So I can't stress that enough, that that's what we're here for. That's who we're elected officials. That's what we're trying to do. And believe me, we want to open the town as soon as it's safe to do so.
Will businesses be able to be checked on? I don't know if this question is direct to the PD, but I know someone asked here, what about businesses are they checked on?
Yes, if you have one, we'll check on the businesses too. We do try to do, especially on midnights, the guys are going around checking the businesses. But if you have a specific request, please either email me or call me, call the PD, and we'll do what we can.
All right, I think that's everything. Again, if the board has other questions in their notes.
Can I just ask a quick question? Carl, Tim, if you don't mind me asking, were you guys born in Maine?
No.
So for everybody saying this is an us-versus-them mentality, we have folks who live in this community who are part of it, who aren't from Maine, who are also helping make these decisions. It's not, that's not what this is. It needs to stop being portrayed as that. It's not what it is. No one wants to do this. It's just, it's bad. That's all.
And I'd like to say Carl is worse than me because he's a master. I'm a New Yorker, so.
There is one last question that came in. I think it's a good one. How are you dealing with residents who work out of state and still have to work during the pandemic?
The state order describes who are essential and who are not essential. And as long as they're essential, they should have a letter that resides on their person or in their vehicle that allows them to travel interstate. I have one in my car. I have given out essential letters to folks that meet that definition in our community.
And that is a good thing to make sure everybody does have, because some of the places that the town manager mentioned earlier, we've gone to, and they've had that letter from a service that they work for, that they need to be there providing medical assistance to someone in town or work at a medical facility. So those are, it's really good to tell people to have those.
All right, I think that's everything.
Any other questions on the board? Chris, you have something?
I do. Brittany attested you with your name for your program there. I put a poll on our Facebook Live. We had 85 people vote for We Are Wells, and we had 64 people vote for Wells Neighbor to Neighbor, so.
That's great. That sort of aligns with the data that was out from the Town of Wells page. We had 19 vote for We Are Wells and 11 vote for Neighbor to Neighbor.
Okay, so We Are Wells.
And I just want to say for the record, I did start that hashtag just saying on our Facebook page.
Thanks, Chris. Any other things or comments from the board at this point? All right, John, do you have a report?
Yes, very quickly, tomorrow evening over at the county courthouse is the annual budget caucus where the five county commissioner districts come together and elect people. You either have to be an elected official or an interested citizen from the public to be on the budget committee at the county level. In District 5, where Wells resides, two of the positions are filled and only one is vacant. We have a public sector person appointed in District 5, which happens to be our police chief, Joanne Putnam from York. And the elected official from District 5 from Wells is Kathy Chase. There is one vacancy in the entire District 5, which is from Kittery, Elliott, all the way up to Kenny Bunk.
And that has to be an elected person, correct?
It has to be an elected person and that meeting is at 6 o'clock in the parking lot of the courthouse.
Rain or shine.
Yeah, rain or shine.
We don't, we're already on it, Joanne. We don't.
Yeah, you don't have to go.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Anything else from the board? Well, take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 5-0. Thank you. Good night. Stay healthy. Stay well.
Yes, absolutely.
Sean, don't leave.
Oh, babe?
No, Sean.
Don.
Are we off?
No, no, no. Hold on. I gotta.